...business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll call to order the meeting of the June 20th, 2016 City Council. Mrs. Powell, roll call please.
Branch.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hesse.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Here.
Item three, adoption of agenda.
So, will the agenda be adopted?
Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to amend the agenda to include item under seven A, that is the take-up of Resolution RS 2016-12 at that time.
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And at this time too, I'd like to recognize, I always like to ask if there are any scouts in the audience this evening, and I do see we have one here, and if you'd like, you're welcome to come up to the podium and say your name, and maybe what school you're from, and if you're working on any project, you're welcome to announce that as well. Thanks for being here tonight.
I am Thomas Nichols. I am from Troop 11. I am going to Lewis and Cl-- I will be going to Simonsen, and I am here because I'm working on my merit badge communications.
Wonderful. Good luck with that, and thanks for being here. All right. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Tonight we have the presentation of the Outstanding Employee Award for June to Lindsey Sullivan, and to make the presentation, we have Mr. Kroll.
Thank you, and I'll have Ms. Sullivan come up, and Drew Hilbert, our immediate supervisor. It is my-- this is Lindsey here. It is my pleasure to recognize Lindsey Sullivan, City of Jefferson City Deputy Court Clerk for receiving the Outstanding Employee Service Award for June 2016. The recognition is not only for the specific examples of outstanding service I will mention in a few minutes, but is also in recognition of all the service Ms. Sullivan provides to the citizens of Jefferson City on an ongoing basis. Lindsey Sullivan has been with the city for more than 10 years, having first started as a part-time employee, then becoming a Law Department Assistant and Deputy City Clerk, and now works as a full-time Deputy Court Clerk. Paraphrasing some of the comments submitted for the nomination, Ms. Sullivan is the primary point of contact for defendants in municipal court. Ms. Sullivan also provides everyone who comes to court, to the court service window, helpful and professional assistance for situations in which Ms. Sullivan has to deal with upset or stressed people. Ms. Sullivan does an excellent job of diffusing situations and assisting those customers as well. Ms. Sullivan also works directly with the Parking Division to assist in the enforcement of parking regulations, and which also entails creating the Wheel Clamp or the Boot List. Ms. Sullivan has been the only employee to work on this list since the city switched over to the new court software several years ago. Ms. Sullivan worked on this process and has vastly improved our ability to enforce parking regulations. In addition, Ms. Sullivan works extremely well with police records and assures a seamless transfer of information. In court, Ms. Sullivan facilitates an extremely busy caseload, which includes filing cases, probation reporting and filing, and conducting criminal background checks. It is an extremely demanding job, and Ms. Sullivan keeps up with all the demands and continues to exceed the job expectations. Ms. Sullivan was the first point person for the court in implementing the court software, and is able to work directly with the software provider to make needed changes. Ms. Sullivan also serves as the first point of contact for citizens and customers in City Hall, and Ms. Sullivan also provides additional assistance to coworkers to be helpful, such as when Ms. Sullivan covered the administration office while the other employees were attending the city's employee appreciation luncheon. So congratulations and thanks to Lindsey Sullivan, City of Jefferson City Deputy Court Clerk, on receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for June 2016. Great. And you have some friends with you, some visitors? Want to introduce them? And some coworkers? Want coworkers to stand, maybe? Okay. And your family members. Well, congratulations, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Appreciate all that you do for our city. The long list that Mr. Kroll read is very impressive, and you do all of it with such grace, and a lot of those are kind of hard things to deal with, but you do it by making the city proud. So thank you very much for your effort, and we'll stand up here and get a picture, and I have a city coin to present you as well. Thank you, and congratulations to Lindsey Sullivan. Item B, we have another proud moment, introduction of Police Department New Hires. So we'll have Chief Schrader.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Police personnel, please stand, and we stand, that means get up. They're still in training, still in training. We have it arranged, so they'll be going, I'll be going left to right as I read a brief bio on each one. So first, we have Communications Operator Ashley Zimmer. Ashley's originally from Westphalia. She attended Lincoln University and University of Central Missouri. She most recently was employed as a motor carrier agent with the Missouri Department of Transportation Motor Carrier Services. Long title. Second, we have Communications Operator Jessica Bohannon. Jessica's from California, Missouri. She attended classes at Columbia College, and she was most recently employed as Secretary at the Boone Hospital Center. Third, Veterinary Assistant Chelsea Braun. She is originally from Jefferson City. She obtained her Medical Specialist Associate's Degree from Metro Business College. Chelsea has experience as a volunteer rescue coordinator for the ARFF Missouri Pit Bull Rescue Organization, and some years ago, I think she worked about seven years with the veterinary, and as a veterinary assistant in Holt Summit. She was most recently employed as a Registered Medical Assistant at Capitol Region Medical Center. Next, we have Officer Desmond Wilson, who graduated from Jefferson City High School. He attended Lincoln University and Westminster College. Desmond most recently was employed as a Consumer Loan Specialist with Sun Loan Company. He graduated from the Law Enforcement Training Institute at the University of Missouri on April 15th, and he was voted, this is important, by Academy faculty as the Most Outstanding Recruit. He also, I think, as I remember, rushed for almost 2,000 yards in Jeff City behind a left guard by the name of Schrader. Just thought I'd throw that out there. So, and he's quick to share that recognition. Officer Seymour's not here. He's a, he's in, I guess, the National Guard. He's got some National Guard obligations, but he was a combat medic, served a tour in Iraq, was a corrections officer, and we're glad to have him here. Officer Seymour graduated with Officer Wilson. Officer Christina Greenwald's originally from Houston, Texas. She has six years' experience as a communications operator for the city of Houston. She's fluent, she's bilingual fluent in both English and Spanish. She graduated from Missouri Sheriff's Association Training Academy in March of 2016, so she's a licensed law enforcement officer in the state of Missouri. Finally, we have Officer Brent Alpers. Brent is originally from Versailles. He has a master, a bachelor's degree in biology from Central Methodist University. He was employed for over 10 years at Gates Rubber Company in Versailles. He attended the law, or is attending Law Enforcement Training Institute at the University of Missouri, and Brent will graduate August 12th. So, we have a few more than usual because we skipped one of our hiring processes, so we brought the last two here at one time, and that's why we have more than what we usually introduce. So, anyway, that's our group. Thank you.
Well, we're very glad to have you all on board. Welcome, and I know that this is a wonderful, very proud department that we have here, so we're happy to have you all, and on behalf of the City of Jefferson, welcome. And if you would all six like to come up, we could do a picture if Gail would like to do that, and if there's anyone else here that would like to get in. So you're welcome to come on up, and we'll take a picture today. Yes, Councilman Graham?
Chief, there's also Damian Dawson here. Is he out and about?
No, he's not with us.
Okay. His name was on this sheet.
Yeah, it is. That was a mistake.
Okay.
Ready, one, two, three. Great, thank you all. Thank you, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And another proud moment now, we have Item C, introduction of new fire department hires, firefighters, by Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce our four new firefighters, if you guys would stand. And I've asked Division Chief Jerry Blomberg to assist with their reading of their bios.
Thank you, Chief. Again, from right to left. Colin Wright is originally from Columbia, Missouri, and has worked locally as a paramedic for the last 12 years. Firefighter Wright has been married to his wife Sarah for 12 years, and they have a son, Will, who's 10, and a daughter, Ashley, who's six. Colin served with the Jefferson City Fire Department on May 23rd, 2016. Justin Weingard is originally from Vienna, Missouri. He said his life goal was to become a professional firefighter. He entered the fire service in 2010 as a volunteer for Vienna, and then volunteered for Boone County Fire after high school graduation. He started his career, his fire, professional fire career with Battlefield Fire District in 2014. Justin started with the Jefferson City Fire Department on May 23rd, 2016, excuse me. Devon Rhodes is originally from Belleville, Illinois. He graduated from the St. Louis County Fire Academy in May of 2015. Firefighter Rhodes has two beautiful daughters, Alyssa was three, and Kaylee is two months, and his five-year-old stepson Brayden, along with his loving fiancee, Ola. Devon started with the Jefferson City Fire Department on April 18th, 2016. Sean Henning is originally from St. Louis, Missouri, where he began working towards his career goal to become a firefighter. After completion of EMP courses, he worked as a firefighter EMT in Mississippi. Sean's been married to his wife Virginia for the last year and a half. He hopes to be an asset to the department and the community of Jefferson City. Sean started the Jefferson City Fire Department on April 18th, 2016.
Wonderful. We're glad to have you all on board as well. It's a fine department that we have, and on behalf of the City of Jefferson and the City Council, welcome to all of you, and if you'd like to come up, we can get a group photo as well. Did you two want to come up too? You want to? Sorry. Okay, ready? Great, thank you. Thank you, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much. All right. And Item Five now, we have public hearings. There are none scheduled tonight. Item Six, appointments by the mayor, there are none. So we'll move on to Item Seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We'll start with Item A, Mr. Bill Farr, Cole County, City of Jefferson Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been reporting to the Public Safety Committee for the last several months on our activities with the Cole County Jefferson City Hazard Mitigation Plan. We finalized that back in May, so it's now up to the communities within the county to do the resolution, speaking in favor of this. A little bit of a history on this, our hazard mitigation plan is reviewed and updated every five years by federal government standards and laws, so the last time this was completed was in 2011. This is comprised of city, county, government, which both entities were very involved then, our communities within the county, including St. Martin, St. Martins, St. Thomas, Russellville, Wardsville, and Taos. So all those mayors come to the meetings. We hold two meetings every month, so we've been doing this for five months. Throughout the hazard mitigation plan, and this is something we look at in the executive summary, it's very simple to read. In fact, Steve wouldn't know if I was going to read the whole thing tonight, but I think I'll kind of bypass that. But this is something that hazard mitigation saves lives and property. It's things that we look at in our community that can save those lives and property during a disaster of any kind, man-made disasters, or any other thing that might come to our community. We have a very, very good working relationship, both city and county government, public works, community development, law enforcement, fire, all the entities working very close together. Jefferson City Public School, Eugene School, Russellville School, Blair Oak School, all were included in this. Our utilities, American Water was there as representatives, Amber and UE, we had all the water districts that came to meetings. If something within that jurisdiction guideline kind of met, something that we could look at. The most important thing, very briefly, is the mitigation plan is something that we look at as far as a good working relationship in our community with all of our entities, and looking at anything that we think that could happen during a flood, or tornado, or an ice storm, a man-made event, cybersecurity is mentioned in there, a lot of new things. If we can put those in our plans, that we recognize those as a community, if something should happen towards that, we're more likely that the federal government's going to look at that, if there's a disaster declarations that they did recognize that, we need to try to help with that. Now, I'm not here to say that they're going 100% fund something, but it is something that we recognize. We went through this in 2011, and it was a little bit more broad. This year, the federal government wanted us to do what's called an All-Hazard Plan, and that really made a lot more sense to most of us in emergency management, because our local emergency operations plan for the city, county, and all the communities is about 360 pages. It is an all-hazard plan, so now this plan really works good with that plan. So I'll take any other questions that anyone might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilman Mahalovich?
I got two. One is, is this the National Historic Register? Is that state or federal? It's not our own?
I think that what that looks at, Councilman, is they call them recognized structures within your community, so if there's something, say if we have a historical type structure that we really, is there something that might happen to that that we can try to prevent, say in a flood? So that would include local, state, and federal, yes.
Okay. And the second question was, you said the last one was 2011. Is that available somewhere, that last plan?
It's still online. I failed to mention, this was a cooperative agreement. Our Mid-Missouri Regional Council, as most of you know, that work with, in our five-county region, SEMA, State Emergency Management, actually contracts with them to do this, so they provide the staff and all the resources. So that's a 75% match. Of all the people that came to the meetings and the many hours we spent, our soft match toward that is our hours that was included, so it did not cost the city and county anything for that. So the 2011, I believe, Rick, is still on their website, yes. It's about 130-some pages, I believe.
The reason why I ask is there's some interesting figures here about assessed market value, and assessed and market value, and I'm kind of curious how those have changed throughout the net price.
It would be. You know, that's a good thought. I have looked at that myself.
Any further questions for Mr. Farr? Okay. Thank you for being here and presenting that this evening, and for all your hard work on that.
Thank you. Thank you all, thank you for all the staff.
Sure. Thank you. And at this time, we'll take up Resolution RS 2016-12. Is there a motion to do so? All right, and Mrs. Powell will read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to adopt the updated Cole County Jefferson City Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from council? All right, Mrs. Powell, roll call please.
Branch.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hesse.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. At this time, Item 7B, the Salute to America Updates by Mayor Turgeon and Event Staff. This evening, we are going to have Kathy Crowe here with us. She was not able to attend, so I've kind of enlisted the help of our council this evening, so turn your mics on just in case, but I'll promise we are not the entertainment for the night. Kathy Crowe is the Salute to America Chairperson, and I am the Salute to America Foundation Chair. So working together, we work very hard on this event. There's a lot of volunteers and sponsors that make the July 4th festivities happen, and this is the last council meeting before the July 4th event, so we wanted to announce all of the exciting and wonderful things that are happening. As you know, July 4th falls on Monday night, so that kind of opens up the whole weekend for activities. So I want to start by talking about what's going on Sunday, July 3rd, and Monday, July 4th. So I will announce a few of the events and highlight them, but you can also check all of these out on the web at salutetoamerica.org. Also, you can check out Facebook, they have several things listed, and if you really want to be on top of it, they have an app this year, it's called Palaroo. So if you get the Palaroo app, you can, on your phone, check everything that's happening at these festivities. So mark your calendars to start with for the festivities on Sunday, July 3rd. There are many events happening, including Missouri American Water Carnival Land, that's 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. Everybody wants to know when that carnival is. Also, the Big Parade is 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on that Sunday evening. It's the Salute to America Parade celebrating Lincoln University's 150th Year, and they will also have their band. So for one of the first times, we're going to have a band in the July 4th parade from Lincoln University, so looking forward to that celebration. That evening on Sunday, July 3rd, is also the Not-Not Opening Ceremonies at the Capitol. It's 7:30 to 8:30 that evening, and then from 8:30 to 10:00, there is a free concert on the Capitol lawn for, featuring the Ozark Mountain Daredevils. So a lot of exciting things happening, even though the Capitol's under construction, there still is the free concert that evening, so that's all happening Sunday, July 3rd. Monday, the big day, July 4th, is an all-day event in the downtown area. It kicks off at 9:00 a.m. with the Red Bike in Blue Fun Run, registered 8:00 a.m. that morning at Red Wheel Bike Shop on West Main. Entertainment and different stages going on that entire day, all kinds of fun things to do for families and kids. From 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., there's entertainment on almost all the stages located within the downtown. The carnival is again that day from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And that evening, the big entertainment is, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the Capitol lawn is a featuring music by Groove Thing that is brought to you by the Riley Automotive Group and Midwest Block and Brick, and then falling, featuring, at the end of the night, the Red, White, and Boom Missouri Credit Union simulcast fireworks show. And Jefferson City, as you all know, has the best fireworks show out of any city anywhere around here. It's definitely a big deal, and so that evening, Monday night, July 4th, it will be simulcast on Nash FM. They even have the music to coordinate with the fireworks. So everybody, bring your families, and fireworks begin at dusk on Monday, July 4th, after the Groove Thing concert. So those are a lot of the events that we've really grown accustomed to love every year. Those are all free events, looking forward to that. Bring your families. But this year, we've added something new to the agenda. Saturday night, July 2nd, there is an event at MSP, at the prison, because as we realized the Capitol was under construction, and we realized we're growing this event so much, we thought, how can we grow it even more and outdo what we've always done in the past and make it even better? So Saturday night, July 2nd, we're having a concert. Travis Tritt will be coming to the prison. Tickets are on sale now. They're very limited, so don't wait too long. You can get tickets online at salutetoamerica.org. Also going along with that, there's even a dinner inside A-Hall donated by Prison Brews. Very limited, in fact, I think they have about four tickets left to the dinner, so you probably waited too long for that, but you can still get tickets to the Travis Tritt concert. Doors open at 4:00, and there are three bands coming on before Travis Tritt, starting at 5:00, 6:00, and 7:00, and then Travis Tritt comes on at 8:00 p.m. that night. So the other bands that'll be featured that night at the prison that are included in this are Hillbilly Vegas, the Jason Bertrand Band, and the Shotgun Billies. Tickets for this fine event are only $35, so very exciting. I hope you can all come, and I hope that all 10 of the council will either come or bring their families and friends. And Kathy Crowe's not here tonight, but I want to make Kathy proud, so we are going to do our own presentation since she can't be here, and I'm going to ask the council, since we're so excited that Travis Tritt is coming, so my first question for the night, I want to know, why is there water in these pitchers tonight?
Because they ain't working anymore.
Because the whiskey ain't working anymore. You're right. And I want to know, why are you all excited?
Because I was raised on country classics like...
All right. I knew you did, Councilman Hesse. And why are you all going to this concert on, at the prison on July 2nd?
We're all members of the country club. Country music is...
What we love. All right. And what do you think about it being held on the grounds once known as the bloodiest 47 acres in America?
I smell trouble.
It goes like this. Right? All right.
Right.
It goes, hey, good old double O-K-I-N-G. I smell T-R-O-U-B-L-E.
That's what Carlos said.
B-L-E.
That's what I heard.
I thought I heard you say that. This is not being recorded, I don't think, right? You're cutting this part out.
Too late, yeah.
All right. But if I do get into trouble, it won't be that bad, and if I do, what should I do?
Here's a quarter, call someone who cares.
All right. All right, we made Jefferson City proud tonight, right? All right. So tonight, we're excited, the council is excited to share that Travis Tritt will be here on July 2nd, and I hope that you all go. Don't wait too long, tickets are very limited, and as we've been wanting to do something at the prison for a really long time, this is really exciting.
I had a question for you, Mayor.
What question?
My question is, did you ever think Travis Tritt would come to prison?
Ah, tell me I was dreaming. Sorry, I had to laugh over there. Yes, I am so excited, and we're not dreaming, Travis Tritt is coming, and we are finally doing something at the prison, so let's get excited, July 2nd. All right, on to the next thing on the agenda. Thank you, council. Y'all are my good backup singers, and I promise we will not be the entertainment for that night. Okay, Item Eight, announcements by the mayor, as if I didn't have already there already. Check out your council committee meetings on JeffersonCityMo.gov for the calendar for our standing committee meetings. I have a few announcements myself. I wanted to announce the Food for Kids, which is, starting June 27th, there will be free lunches distributed at Second Christian Church, and we do have some city folks that are involved in that free lunch, Food for Kids event, so I wanted to share that, and I did send an email to the council about that event today. Also, last week on Friday, we had a dedication for the Foot, which is a plaque that was placed on Lafayette Street near Lincoln University, in the former location of what was known as the Foot. There's a lot of really deep, rich history in that area. It was a wonderful ceremony. We had most of the council in attendance, and at the next council meeting, we will have a presentation about that Foot dedication, so we will look forward to that. Item B, I'll have Mrs. McMillan make an announcement about the upcoming food code update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are embarking on the task of updating the food code. The current food code was based on a 2001 model food code that was promulgated by the Food and Drug Administration. We're proposing to adopt the 2013 State of Missouri Food Code, so we are going to host some open houses to invite people to come in and talk about that, if they're interested. First open house is July 14th, it's a Thursday. Second one will be on July 19th, Tuesday, and those are both from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the large conference room. In addition, we'll be sending out notices and invitations to our food service clients, so they can expect to see something in the mail probably later this week. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. McMillan? Also, Drew would like to announce the upcoming TIF meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Thursday, in the council chambers, there will be a TIF commission, and they will hear the Truman TIF proposal. It's open to the public. There's a public hearing. Staff will explain the presentation along with the developers, and folks, I'm certain, will be there to share their opinion as well. For the council members, I actually have a hard copy of the plan for you, if you want to stop by my office after this meeting, if you want it, before Thursday, otherwise, we'll deliver it later on.
Thank you. What time is that on Thursday?
5:30.
Thank you. Are there any further council announcements? All right. Item 9, Lincoln University. Jonathan is not here this evening, but is there anything else to announce for Lincoln? Do you know of anything else, Carlos?
Unfortunately, this past weekend, we had two current students who lost their lives in St. Louis due to drunk drivers, so please keep the Lincoln University family in your thoughts and prayers, so that's it.
So, sorry to hear that, Councilman Graham. We will certainly keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We don't have anyone signed up under that category. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced. We have 2016-16. Mrs. Powell?
An ordinance amending the 2015-2016 budget by reclassifying the electrician position to parks maintenance worker within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an opportunity for us to look at a position that's vacant and look at our efficiencies and get somebody a little more well-rounded we can put in other areas of our department, so we're asking for your all's approval for this.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Any council deliberation? Councilman Mahalovich?
Did the commission vote on this, or do they vote on it?
They haven't. They've been made aware of it, but they haven't made, yeah, they haven't voted on it.
Any further questions or council discussion? Okay, thank you. Item 13, bills pending. We have 2016-15. Mrs. Powell?
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Lehman Construction Company, LLC, in the amount of $2,110,598.74 for the Stadium Boulevard and Jefferson Street Intersection Improvements Project.
Thank you, Mr. Bangy.
Yes, this is a project that we've been working on for a number of years, and have finally brought to you for approval, a contract. The project is going to construct a multi-lane roundabout at the intersection of Stadium and Jefferson. We have a, the issue there is an issue of safety. We have kids that are coming into either the high schools early in the morning, and of course, Lincoln University, and also Kappa Region Medical Center, and there's just a little bit more volume than we can handle with the existing intersection, and so we have cars that are backing out onto the highway. And so, that's the main purpose of the project, is to eliminate that safety issue, but certainly, it's going to create a less congestion in that corridor as a whole. And so, before you, we have a contract, and I know there was some discussion at the last meeting concerning the, to who, which contract the contract should be awarded, and there was some issue, I believe, about balanced or unbalanced bids. We've taken a look at that a little bit more, and I think Matt has given you, sent an email out with some language in it from the LPA manual, which is a local projects assistance manual that MoDOT publishes, and the reason that's important is because there are federal funds in this project, and so we have to get concurrence from MoDOT for these projects in order for them to move forward. And so, just some of the language in there, towards the end of the email, basically is talking about materially unbalanced bids. I think there was a question raised about three of the items in the document. I think one of them was removals, earthwork, and mobilization, I think, were the three that were brought up. In some ways, those being lump sums are sort of fixed costs, and so those numbers aren't going to change. And so, in some ways, that's a good thing for us. We know exactly what that number means. If you look at a couple of the other items, particularly Items 4 and 5 in the contract, one of those is stabilized subgrade stabilization, or stabilized subgrade and class 3 excavation in rock, and you'll notice that both of those are allowances, and so what that language means essentially is that those are unmeasured quantities, and so we are estimating what those quantities might be. And in this case, we're saying there would be 500 yards of stabilized subgrade and 325 yards of rock. And so, those are items that are in most of our contracts, are the most highly variable. And so, if you take a look at those numbers and look at those numbers as submitted by Lehman Construction and Don Schneiders, you'll see that Lehman, actually, in both cases, has a unit cost that's less than Don Schneiders. In the case of the subgrade stabilization, there's $28 per cubic yard for Lehman versus 40 for Don Schneiders, and in the case of rock, it's $40 for Lehman and 85 for Don Schneiders. And so, it wouldn't take a lot of error within those numbers for Don Schneiders' overall cost, you know, to become even higher than Lehman's. And so, I think if, you know, we're looking at balanced and unbalanced, I think those items are going to lead to changes in the contract cost, more so than those lump sum fixed costs that were talked about last time around. And so, happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bangy? Councilman Mahalovich?
I'm still a little concerned about the one item that we talked about that was debated to us or presented to us as being unbalanced, and that still draws enough concern to me to not be wholly supportive of this bid.
Right, and I think the three items that were in question last time, I believe, were removals of improvements, earthwork, and mobilization. If you look at those numbers collectively, so if you were to take those and add the three of them together, both or all three, if you look at the engineer's estimate, Lehman, and Don Schneiders, collectively, the engineer's estimate was 389, I'm sorry, $398,000. Lehman's number, added altogether, was 417,775, and Don Schneiders was 408,540. So, the difference between Lehman and Don Schneiders in that instance is only 2%, if you consider all three of those numbers together. And like I said, those are a fixed cost. You know, we're going to be paying that amount of money to them regardless of what happens on the project. And so, while, you know, while Lehman's removals and earthwork were very low and his mobilization was high, Don Schneiders had a high removals and earthwork and a low mobilization, and so, when viewed as one, the numbers essentially wash out. Lehman, we had spoken with the contractor in asking him, you know, what led to his mobilization number being significantly higher, and his response essentially was that he had received a number of bids from his subcontractors very late in the process. You know, the bids, when they submit them, are due at 1:30 in the afternoon, and if you don't have them there, then they can't be accepted. And so, I think he was still waiting on some numbers from some of his subcontractors, and waited and waited and waited, and then ultimately made the choice of putting a number down for that sub, since they didn't get it submitted to him in enough time, and then put some additional money in mobilization to cover some of those costs where they to be higher.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I think to characterize Don Schneiders' is high is only to acknowledge that, when you talk about Tweigh House and Sam Gaines, they were more in alignment with the Don Schneiders' bids, and for some reason, Lehman is so much lower. It's that mobilization charge that's out of, seems to me, it's just quite a bit different than the others.
Councilwoman Ward?
Need some clarification on the mobilization line item. You said that's a fixed item?
Correct.
Okay, so they'll be receiving a percent of that with the start of this project?
Right. We're following MoDOT standards, and so, they would receive 25% of that money in their first, in the first payment that we make to them, and then, by the time that we reach 50% of the overall project cost, they would have received all of it. So, in between zero, the first payment and 50% of the total project, they would have received all of the mobilization number.
And when's the project supposed to begin?
We're hoping that the project can begin the second week of July, of this year, yes.
Of this year.
Councilman Prather?
One more.
Oh.
So, you said the subcontractors added their bids into the mobilization, which is fixed. Should those have been in another line item, which would have been adjustable?
Right. In some ways, it's a risk doing that, because, for instance, and I think I had used the example of striping earlier, you know, if, for instance, we were to, for some reason, decide that we wanted two stripes instead of one, and the amount of striping doubled, they would still be just, they would still be paid at, for instance, $3 a foot for that striping, even though it might be costing them $4 a foot. So, in some ways, it's not good for the contractor to sort of make those switches, because ultimately, if you start overrunning some of the unit items, it doesn't really pan out all that well. But they do that sometimes if they're in a hurry or having trouble getting bids from subcontractors, and it's happened before.
Councilman Prather?
You mentioned the variable costs, and you mentioned that it could go over, but on the other side, could it come under bid?
That is true. Those items could be, could be less.
How would that affect it?
It wouldn't really affect it, except that we would not spend as much, we would have anticipated spending more money than we are. I don't know how to explain that exactly. We would be, you know, if, for instance, with the, with the rock excavation, we were planning on spending $85 a yard for it, and so, the contract accounts for that fact that we were going to spend $85 a yard. Now, we, if, if we suddenly, you know, have one yard less than what we thought, well, we would not spend $85 that we thought we were going to spend. So, it, yes, the possibility of us spending less money from what we anticipated spending is true, but it doesn't really mean anything necessarily.
Councilman Prather?
Say, for example, we would accept a Schneiders' bid, and you'd have to go back. Could you take us through the process of what we would have, what we would see going, you know, back through the county, back through the state, and what effect would this have on the project?
I think the memo alluded to it. Yes, we have already received concurrence from the county and from the state, both, and so, those would be processes that we would have to, to go back through, I would imagine. I would, we've not, I've not been part of that process before, so I'm not entirely for sure. I don't believe, based on the information that I've read from MoDOT and conversations that I've had with them since the bid came out, that, I would think that we'd be jeopardizing our federal funding if we were to not go with Lehman Construction, since he was a bidder that met all the qualifications. And so, I think on this particular part of the contract, we're looking at spending almost a half a million dollars. The total project, federal funds involved in this project are $787,707, you know, which, some of that, we've already spent on the traffic study and then some on the design, so in some ways, we might be putting those funds in jeopardy as well. But I don't, MoDOT hasn't told me that directly. In terms of the county, you know, they're paying, you know, 50% of the projects after we take out the grant funds, and so, you know, in doing such, they would be, you know, I think it was 8,000, so they'd be essentially, it'd be $4,000 more that they would need to come up with, which, you know, I imagine would not be overly burdensome, but certainly, we'd have to be able to explain to the commission why we believe that that would be necessary and get their approval.
Councilman Costalis?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bangy, you brought up about the federal funding there, and that's what I wanted to bring up, is that if we don't do this, the possibility that us and the county is going to be on the hook for $787,000, that's not in our budget, you know. Yes, I'd like to do with local preference, but MoDOT and feds don't allow that, and I don't want to risk about $390,000 of city funds to save 9,000.
And one other thing, the timing, too, would be affected, you know, ultimately, if we needed to go back and begin to rework this. You know, anticipation, I think, in response to Ms. Ward's question about when we planned on starting, you know, July, you know, the second week in July, that sort of allows us that opportunity to get some of that work done before school starts up again. You know, certainly, this area is very affected by school traffic, and so, we have about four or five weeks in there where we'd hope to get the eastern leg of Stadium completed, so that we'd be out of the way before school starts and the public school kids were, you know, going that direction. And so, with, you know, with needing to go back perhaps and revisit both the county and the state, you know, we'd probably miss that window in terms of our timing.
Thank you. Any further questions or council discussion? Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Nay.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Nay.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, there's nothing on the informal calendar. We've taken up the resolutions under 15. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on all other topics. Individuals will have three minutes to present on any subject, and we do have one person who has signed up this evening, Shimin Zhong. Welcome. So, if you just state your name, and you have three minutes to speak about any subject.
Okay, thank you. Greetings, Mayor. Greetings, council members. My name is Shimin Zhong, and I have been a resident of Jefferson City since 2010. For many years, I have been involved in efforts to raise awareness about something terrible happening in China, the country of my birth. I'm here today to share some good news with the council and committee members. Last Monday, the U.S. House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution 343 condemning China's state-sanctioned forced organ harvesting from practitioners of the Falun Gong meditation and other prisoners of conscience. When I heard the news, my first feeling was not excitement, but deep belief that this world is not the evil's happy land, and that this world is controlled by the good people, and I feel very proud that my representative is one of those strong fighters for the good. Our Congressman Luke Meyer and five other Missouri representatives were among 185 co-sponsors of Resolution 343. Before the floor vote, Congressman Chris Smith from New Jersey said, "This legislation is an important step in bringing accountability and transparency to maybe one of the great crimes of the 21st century, the 17-year effort to eliminate Falun Gong practice from China." The Chinese Communist regime began persecuting Falun Gong in 1999, when they discovered that nearly 100 million people were practicing Falun Gong. Falun Gong is actually an ancient practice that improved the mind and body, that became very popular in 1990s. It involves slow-moving exercises and meditation, and a philosophy based on truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance. The persecution in China has been relentless and brutal, especially the shocking accounts of organ harvesting. I hope you will visit the website stoporganharvesting.org to find out more, and do anything you can to support the global effort to stop this crime against humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 17, council and staff discussion of presentation topics, and I thank Shimin Zhong for being here, and you mentioned raising awareness, and I think you did that this evening, so thank you. Any comments about any presentation topics this evening by council? All right. Item 18, any new business? Any unfinished business? All right, item 20, is there a motion to approve the closed session minutes?
So moved.
Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes. And before we go into closed session, item 21, I just have to ask one last time. Here's a quarter.
Call someone who cares.
All right, Councilman Graham. All right, he's, he's ready. Good job.
I told you, I watched the video this morning.
Wonderful. Good job. All right, item 21. Pursuant to Section 610.01 of the revised statutes of Missouri, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following legal action, Section 610.01.1.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
All right. So we will begin our closed session as soon as the room is cleared. And thank you all for being here.